Adrian Carson Foster, I am running for school board in District Five. My priorities for our district are increased family engagement, increased accountability overall in the district, and to work towards more innovative teaching practices. I do want to make sure that we are operating from the perspective that our ultimate duty of care rests with the well-being of students. So that is my main priorities in a nutshell. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon or good evening. I am Jacory Callaway. I am school board candidate, District Five. My top three priorities for Montgomery Public School System. First one is transparency. We know we all need transparency throughout our district as well as our school system. Also, we need to build a... The second is building a community to support the families as well as the teachers in this school system. So, we all know we have to make sure that we're building that relationship between the community as well as the families and the school system, the school instructors and teachers, and administrations throughout the system. And lastly is we need to work on our math and reading. So, we're wanting to focus on our math and reading in the school district as well.
My name is Marcus Bambler. I am running as a candidate in District One. My platform is pretty straightforward. I want to make sure that all of the decisions that we make put our students and staff first. I want to build authentic relationships with the community and be a bridge from the community to our superintendent. I want to make sure that we use data and information to make decisions. And lastly, I want to continue to keep building on our positive school climate so that we can make sure that we have success in the district.
So, there's a follow-up question to your opening statement. How would you go about achieving your top priority if elected?
Okay, if elected, the first thing would be when I talk about transparency. We have to make sure that we are transparent in everything that we do in the public school, in Montgomery Public School System. We have to make sure that we're including everyone, making sure that everyone is a part of the decision-making process. For instance, if we want our parents and the community to support the school system, guess what? We have to include them. Second thing is building a community to support the teachers as well as the families. We have to make sure that we are inviting and having our families as well as our community being a part of the school. For instance, as a parent, I need to feel like I'm welcome at that particular school, not going to the door and you stop me right there. I want to make sure that we're welcome. So, we have to make sure that we are building that relationship between the teachers. We have to build that relationship with the students, more importantly, as well as the community. And lastly, improving our academic performances. Guess what? We have to make sure that we are putting our resources in all schools. Don't just pick and choose which school because just because I'm on the west side, guess what? I need to have the same resources on the east side or vice versa. So, we have to make sure that we are doing all that. And as a board member, I'm going to make sure that, hey, I look out for all of Montgomery, not just District Five, because guess what? I'm for all students. And we have to make sure that we... One word that we've been hearing lately is equitable. We have to make sure that we are giving everybody that same opportunity, no matter where or what you... where you come from. So, that's how we would do that.
All right, my first part of my platform is increased family engagement. I currently sit on the brand-new Family Engagement Committee for the National PTA. We established the standards for family-school partnerships. The last time we did it, it became part of No Child Left Behind. We are in the process of rewriting those now, and they usually become part of the requirements for Title I funding in our system. So, what I want to do is to make sure that we have a functioning PTA in every school throughout the district and that the interaction between the unit and the school and the system itself operates by the nationally-recognized standards for successful family-school partnerships. When it comes to accountability, I have served as the co-chair for the Culture and Climate Committee for... that is a subcommittee of the school board. And we have been in the process of assessing the climate for teachers. We gave a report on teacher retention, and we are now shifting into students. One of the things we did at the very beginning of the process was to go through the data from Advanced Ed to see what was going on in terms of the school district. And one of the things we discovered is, one, for a school system our size, we don't have the adequate amount of staff to ensure that policies and procedures are being followed. So, what I would propose that we do is to review some of the ways that we're doing things to make sure they comply with existing policy and state and federal law. And then, lastly, in terms of innovation, the pandemic has shown that we have access to cutting-edge professional development. I've had a chance to get certification from Harvard last summer. And we have enough money, because I have advocated with the National PTA Legislative Convention to increase funding for our school system from the federal level. So, it wouldn't even come from our pockets. So, we need to be doing that. Thank you.
So, I have kids in the district, and I'm sure many of you do. And I want the same thing for your kids that I want for mine. I want safe schools. I want a quality education. And I want them to be prepared at the graduation. So, sitting on the board, the only thing that I can do is make good decisions, right? And so, I believe in taking a diplomatic approach to problem solving. I believe in discussing issues, breaking points to achieve solutions to benefit. I believe in serving everyone in the district, regardless of your background. I believe in transparency, like Jacory talked about, and keeping the community abreast of what goes into the district. I believe in giving the good news right along with the bad news. I believe our stakeholders should be heard, and their ideas should be shared with our superintendent. I believe in helping our children attain a quality education. And sometimes that may require us to make decisions outside of party lines and politics. I believe in being level-headed and sensible, weighing the consequences of my words, actions, and decisions. And I believe that the parents of MPS want the same, like I said, they want the same for my kids, your kids, that you want for mine. I believe in the central office and our administrators and teachers. And lastly, I believe in the future of MPS. Saying all of that, I just believe, you know, we have to go in and make the good decisions. It's all about good decision-making.
Thank you, Marcus. I know we've heard over the last few years, we know that MPS is experiencing severe challenges, whether it... you know, and this was before the pandemic. And now, the pandemic has compounded some of those issues. We talk about the capacity of the teachers in the school. So, share with the audience and the community that's viewing live streaming. In what ways would you, as a board member, facilitate problem-solving resolutions with the new superintendent that's coming in? Marcus, please.
So, as a board member, we're just in charge of listening to the superintendent's recommendations and making sure those recommendations align with what needs to go on in the system as far as being successful. So, I think part of that is making sure that we hear all of the information that is available, making good judgments on that information, making sure that that information is communicated and delivered appropriately to us, and then taking that information and discussing it with our board members openly, openly with the public, getting the public's... Getting their viewpoint about some of the decisions that we're making. And then bringing those viewpoints back to the table so that we can, like I said before, make an educated decision, one that makes sense. And Taffany, not having a second agenda. I think sometimes we can get caught up... I'm sorry, your agenda. I think sometimes we can get caught up in what we want. And it's not about what we want. Again, we have to be kid-centric, and we have to understand that some of the things that are going on in the district, parents can't help. So, we need to be there, and we need to be better bridge builders between our parents and teachers, our teachers and students. And like I said, just making those good decisions.
If you go back and look at the interview with Dr. Brown that Monday night, you will see that many of the issues that you raised, he talked about solving using social-emotional learning. As a member of the Culture and Climate Committee, I looked at the program panorama that he mentions that he already has implemented where he is now. And the person on the school board who works with our committee, Erica Watkins Smith, took that to our existing administration. So, we have the capacity to begin solving these problems. This is not an unusual program. It is already being utilized in Attala County. So, one of the things that I think as a board member that we can do is to support the innovative ideas that the superintendent that we have coming in already is familiar with. I mean, he's also worked with family engagement centers, which is something that I really want us to get to serve not only Montgomery, but the Black Belt. But as board members, I agree with you right here. We have got to be focused on what is best for students, and we can't compete with ideas. If a board member brings an idea, and it's one that's best for our district, then we need to pull our egos out of it and say, this is something that we need to be implementing. Because we could always be ahead if we were not focused on things that are outside of what's in the best interest of our students. Thank you.
Okay, so, as we get the new superintendent, sitting in the interview, he had some great ideas. And so, looking at all that he said he's... no, he needs to do. So, what we would do as a board member, I would sit down, let's talk about some of the ideas that you have. One thing we have to remember that Montgomery is different than Ohio. Just because it's working there in Ohio or wherever, we have to make sure that it's going to fit Montgomery. And so, it may... what we would do is sit down, let's talk about, let's come up with a plan of action that fits Montgomery Public School. And so, as a parent that will be in this district a long time, it is something that I'm passionate about. Hey, I want to make sure that our kids are getting the best education. I want to make sure that we have a plan in place. Once he gets here, give him a time enough to... Let's work and look and learn the culture of Montgomery. I think he would be great for us, but let's work together. And as Fabio and Marcus said, hey, we're all... it's all about the kids. It's all about the kids. And being a parent with a ninth grader and a kindergarten, guess what? I will be here a long time. And as a board member, I have a vested interest, because guess what? My daughter is in kindergarten, and she will go through MPS a long time. And so, that's why, you know, that's what we have to do as members of the board, as well as working with the superintendent, to let him understand, hey, we're about the kids.
Thank you. So, this will be my last question, and then we'll give it to questions from the audience. And before I ask this question, I'll reflect. So, my daughter came through MPS. Yeah, she's an adult now. And one of the things that I always found disturbing was that the teachers, some, not all of them, and administrators always felt like there was a blanket way to engage the teachers. It was an A-B-C, and there was no room for flexibility. And I think we have to realize the unique ways in which children learn is very different. So, as a board member, how would you support educators so that they have that flexibility to engage with children as they are unique learners and not to, you know, basically suppress or hinder them, which causes, you know, issues with self-esteem and some other issues that we see in our children? And we'll start with you.
Okay, so, as a board member, focusing on relationship is very important with our kids. We have to understand with... when we're working with the teachers, the administration, not every child is the same. Just because this child learned this way, you have to be able to adapt and have a culture where the child with less information or the less skills will be able to learn. And so, we have to understand, it's really about listening and getting out there and making relationships. When the parents come, allow them, let's talk about this parent. Let's see what's going on with this particular child. Let's support the teachers. I read all the time on social media where if we having a problem with the school or the teacher, we're always negatively talking about the teachers and what they're not doing, what they're going to do, and why... We have to support one another. We have to support the teachers, the administrator. More importantly, we have to make sure that we are looking out for the kids. My priority is about the kids. It does not matter how... what I feel personally, but what I feel is we have to make sure that the kids are our main priority, making sure that we have the resources for all the kids, making sure that not only we have the resources for the students, we have to make sure we have the resources for the instructors, the teachers. The teachers need... they need us. And we have to build that community to bring everybody together. And so, as a board member, I want to bridge the gap. I want to support the teachers, support the administration, support everyone, because we need each other.
Well, I have experienced some of the same things that you have talked about. One of the things that happened during the pandemic on the collegiate level is that we were offered a whole lot of professional development to facilitate the shift to online learning. And then, from there, like I said, I was able to find other programs because it just opened up a whole new world for innovative ways to teach. And then, I brought what I learned back to the other staff members. I think that that is one of those things that we need to really focus on. We have this unique opportunity right now and this set of funds set aside to address some of the deficits that were created by the learning loss in the pandemic, but also this opportunity to catch up. If we are innovative, like what I'm talking about, then we can find ways to... We can find ways to get the training that we need and then to have those teachers come back and train trainers. The best way for us as board members to facilitate that is to make sure that we are looking at that budget and make sure that there is a line item available for this training, make sure that the funds that have already been expended get used where they're intended to be used, which is to improve education and to make up for some of the deficits that we already have. Thank you.
Good. I'm going to mention three things that both of you have previously mentioned. So, there's professional development, programming, and resources. And I think as a board member, those are really the only things that we kind of have control over, the making the decisions about professional development, making sure that professional development is aligned with the strategic plan, and making sure that it digs down into the schools and actually makes it to teachers, not just some blanket professional development where we have a speaker, but maybe addressing some type of professional development that really targets that specific school. So, Taffany, at your specific school, we were having some problems getting down to the students. So, we could talk to new teachers and some teachers there that have experience with that and get some professional development for those that don't. Resources, super important, because if you don't have the resources, and that's both teachers and students. And I'm not just talking about chalkboards and dry erase boards. I'm talking about mental health. I'm talking about days off. I'm talking about our new innovation, which now is our days where we have our Fridays and the kids work from home. So, those types of things really help us to kind of concentrate on what teachers need in order to be successful the next week. And lastly, programming. We want to make sure we have programs that target specific children, programs that target specific ideas that teachers may have in a school. We have to make sure that we're listening to our teachers. And we have to make sure that their voices are being heard by our superintendent and being brought to the table so that we can make those proper decisions.
Thank you. All right. I was about to speak to y'all Tuesday, and tonight I'm going to be an athletic teacher. So, I have one more question. Okay, so, you all mentioned programming, resources. So, I want to just touch on resources, right? How would you, as a board member, ensure that the money allocated for a specific school actually follows the child? That's the kind of way I start with here.
Okay, so, we have to make sure, as a board member, that if that particular child is at that school, we have to make sure that he's getting what he needs. From working in higher ed over 14 years, I served as ADA coordinator. And a lot of my students, they had issues as far as learning problems. And so, we had programs where we had to make sure that they were a part of. And so, if that child is there, we got to make sure that that child is getting everything he needs. Like, for instance, I know that in some of the schools, they're not ADA compliant. For instance, I think one of them is late. You have a child in a wheelchair. That child cannot go up the stairs because there's no elevator or no ramp to get there. We got to make sure that we have those things. If we know a child there is, you know, have a problem, we have to make sure that we are addressing those at this table and being a board member at the table. And so, what I would do as a board member is talk to my schools, District Five, not only District Five, but I will open it up to all because I'm here for everybody, not just District Five. I'm a candidate for Montgomery Public School System Board of Education. And so, we have to make sure that we're listening and finding out what is needed and make sure that that child gets everything that he or she deserves.
In preparation for running for school board, I entered a Master's of Legal Studies program with Washington Law. I'm in my last term, and I am taking a supervised research course. It's really funny that this is the question because I have chosen to deal with the federal regulations regarding funding and what happens with children. So, I have been talking to school board attorneys in other districts. I make sure that I talk to Mr. Watts every time I see him at a school board meeting. And I always go to those budget hearings. I've been going for the past couple of years because I really want to understand that process. Board members in... on the local level and really on the state level, one of the ways that they kind of control what happens is through the allocation. If things aren't being allocated properly or appropriately, then that is a violation of policy, and that falls under accountability. So, what I would be doing as a school board member, one, like I said, I am finding, I am learning every little nuance, nook and cranny of what happens with our funding. But I intend to continue doing that. I'm not just researching this for my health because I want to make sure that we are following... Follow... I'm sorry, following our local policy, our state law, and our federal law. That is something that I am going to be a big champion of. Well, whether I'm elected or not, I'm going to still be on everybody's page. Thank you so much.
I'm going to piggyback off of Fabio because it does come down to the allocation. And not only the allocation, you have to look at the number of students that are at that particular school and looking at that total amount and breaking it down by, for instance, a per pupil expenditure type of case. So, we got to know what kind of... how much each student is getting and whether that amount adds up to the amount total. And then, not just, you know, taking their word for it, but Taffany, we got to come back with some evaluation of that, doing some surveys on whether that money made it there. Again, listening to our administrators and our teachers to make sure that money made it there and getting their feedback on how they use that money and did it align with the plan that they have for that particular school. So, I think just digging down in that data, making sure you're reading that quantitative information and making sure that it aligns again with the strategic plan of the school.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to go to the conversation. Do we have questions from our community?
Hi, good evening. I'm Alicia Ruffin, and I do have a question. I'm going to write it down so I won't forget it. So, you all can answer this if you don't mind. What is your plan for safer schools, schools in excessive amount of behavior issues throughout the district? I heard someone talk about an A-B-C model as far as attendance. Attendance has a lot to do with behavior, and behavior has a lot to do with the content. The students are not where they need to be, so their behavior is going to contribute to that, and then they're going to be absent. So, and I went to McIntyre Comprehensive, and I love working with every student. And so, what is your plan to help those students or prevent those students from going to facilities like that? How can we engage them at their current school so they can be productive citizens, see students that know how to behave instead of sending them to this facility, and they're all together? So, if I fight you on Monday, we're going to be together on Tuesday, together, holding hands. Like, there needs to be some type of program to help those students. So, what is your plan to deal with those type of issues?
I said this four years ago, and I still believe that discipline policy for our 21st century children is antiquated. We need to do some real soul-searching. We need to visit some other school systems to see what kind of things that they're putting in place. We need to make sure that the curriculum that we have is aligned for the kind of things that they can do once they graduate. You know, we're dealing with millennials. Everybody doesn't want to go to college. And so, we need to start that, maybe the eighth grade year, the seventh grade year, so that we can find out what kind of path these kids want to go on. And attendance, like you said, that is paramount. If you're not coming to school, then how can you even get the programming that we're giving out to you? So, yeah, we just need to, I think, kind of dive in. And hopefully, Dr. Brown has some research or has seen some things. But yeah, identifying programs at other schools, visiting school systems, talking to them about their policies and procedures, some of the things that they do. I think that can be helpful too.
Okay, back when my youngest was a twinkle in my eye, I worked with a project in Sumter County, Alabama. They... that was back when you could do direct grants with school systems. And so, what they had was an after-school program. And what I did on Wednesdays is I brought in artists. And we had drummers. We had a literary magazine. We had an artist. We had martial arts. We had this variety of programs. Because what that did was you had to come to the tutoring programs in order to be able to participate in the arts program. It gave the students something to look forward to. And then, at the end of the year, if they had come to so many different programs, then they were able to go on a field trip. And that doesn't happen very often in Sumter County. Here in Montgomery, I work with this project called the NOR Project, where we took eight high school girls at Lanier and eight elders in the community. These are retired women, people like Hensetta Ferson, this woman who was the First Lady of Costa Rica. And we took them through 10 weeks of playwriting training and also interviewing skills. And so, they interviewed one another. We paired them up. And they wrote a 10-minute play based on something that they were inspired by in the life of the other person. Several of those students are now at ASU with me, and I see them show up as freshmen, as leaders. Having activities for students that make them want to come to school because God knows, everybody don't want to learn every single day, right? But having these other things at schools that they gravitate towards, it improves education. We see with girls who have, who are involved with extracurricular activities, it reduces the risk of teen pregnancy. They're not at home where a lot of times they're at risk with older predators. That was something that one of our former principals in the system really pushed for, for us to have this program. So, I really want us to be looking at additional resources to make sure that we are focusing on making sure that our children are well-rounded and that they have things that make them want to come to school and behave. Thank you.
So, with me growing up, I was one of the... So with me, growing up, I was one of those young men that was hard-headed. And guess what? I had to make a change. I had to realize my father wasn't in my life. And so what I had to do was go out and get involved in the community. So now that I'm older, you know, older adult, so I mentor young men. They start in the third grade to twelfth grade. And so what we want to do is, in our schools, as both candidates said, we want to make sure that we have activities for them. Grandma always told me, what is it, "Out of mind, you'll get in trouble," you know, "You're out of mind." There was work, yeah. I used to hear that all the time. And it took me a while, it took me a while to figure out what that really meant. And so now that I have kids and now that I'm involved, I want to make sure that we have something for them to do. I want to keep them busy. Because if they're not busy, they're gonna be doing any and everything. And as a board member, we have to give those resources to those schools. I keep harping on resources. We have to get those resources to that school so that they can have those activities that will then allow the students to participate and they will want to come to school. They will be excited. Hey, I have to get to school, we have this going on. And so as a board member, I want to make sure that if we're going to be for the kids, get all of the resources they need, as well as the schools and the teachers.
Thank you. So we have time for a couple more questions before we ask them for their closing.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Adams, and I heard all three of you talk about resources and putting resources in schools. However, that's good, but who's gonna implement and facilitate the resources if we don't have the teachers and the classrooms are overcrowded with thirty-five to forty? So what would you do for teacher recruitment and retaining to deliver the resources and facilitate the resources in the programs that you all are talking about?
So, can I, okay, so recruitment and retention, that is one thing that is listed for me. Recruitment and retention is very important for MPS. We have to make sure that we have a system and build our system so that we can have those teachers come to us. We want to make sure that we are paying them what other systems, we have to make sure that we are offering benefits that other systems are offering, and we have to make sure that they are treated fairly. You know, you can have teachers, we have great teachers that have left MPS system that are doing wonderful in other school system. And as a board member, guess what? I want to obtain all of our teachers. We have great teachers. They just need that extra support. And when we talk about resources, we, as everybody stated, there are gonna be allocated funds for that. And we have to make sure that we are doing what we are supposed to do for the school district. And I'm passionate about the recruitment and retention, because I have seen teachers leave this district that are doing amazing. They're all around this county. They're all around this county. They're in a taga lounge, everywhere. And we have to get our kids as well as our teachers back. And guess what? It starts with the top and going down. It starts with us. We have to make sure that we are going to do what we tell these teachers we're gonna do. We're gonna, we have to pay them fairly. We have to make sure that we appreciate them. If it's just going by and saying, "Thank you. Thank you for what you've done." They need that. COVID has changed the perspective of everybody. They're stressed. And so we have to be that support system for them.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I almost hesitate to harp on this. But if you go back into the fall school board meetings, you will see a report by Erica Watkins Smith from the Culture and Climate Committee on the issue of teacher retention. We spent last year doing the research, laying out the data, talking to teachers, and finding out what exactly are some of the issues for them here in the district. We have a plan, right, that we suggested. Where did it go? This goes back to what Marcus said before. If you've got another agenda, then you take ideas that have already been put on the table, work that has already been done, and you just put it to the side. One of the things that we talked about, which is this word that nobody ever wants me to use, but I'm gonna use it, is retaliation. See what I'm talking about? Like, everybody knows about it, but when I bring it up, everybody goes, "Hey, you cannot say that. That is a dirty word." That is one of the issues that we deal with. We have a hard enough time getting teachers. And then when an issue comes up, instead of us handling it like professionals, because they have to get professional certifications to become a teacher, right? So we should be able to handle it like professionals, but we don't follow our procedures, we don't follow law, and we get ourselves into trouble. I suggest that when this new superintendent comes on board, we pull out those recommendations, we draw whatever additional data that we can find, and we implement some of those policies that are already available to us so that we can do the work that we know we have before us. This is not a mystery. We do not need Scooby doing the game to tell us how to retain teachers, because we have literally already had a report on it. Thank you.
Good question, first of all. And I think the State Department has done a great job with the deal that came out with the raise. That's exciting. But I think one of the key things is identifying why teachers are leaving the system. And I had this conversation with a friend of mine who was a principal in Ohio. And we talked about teachers are leaving the system because of discipline problems. So I think once we start to build that culture and we do something about our discipline problems, Jennifer, we can start to retain teachers and start to recruit teachers. We have a lot of teachers who are leaving the system for a number of problems. From discipline, from pay, from the pandemic, they're tired. And so we need to start looking at some mental health days. We need to start, like Jacory talked about, praising our teachers, giving them some kind of appreciation. But again, I think if we can fix some things at the school, some of the processes and procedures of pulling bad students out of the, out of class and giving them a break somewhere with sort of justice of some type and letting that teacher be able to give instruction, you know, it feels good to teach. And it feels good to be able to deliver some instruction and have kids pass the test and know that you did that well. So I think if we can alleviate some of those problems, I don't think that we'll have a problem retaining. And as far as recruiting, like I said, I think that comes back to having good customer service, having students and teachers at the center of our decision-making. But again, building a positive culture, so that when they talk about MPS, they talk about it in the light.
Just quickly, speaking about discipline and someone else, what I was talking about, at-risk children. I don't know if this is going to be a board question or if it's a superintendent question, but is there any room to discuss plans for parental accountability?
Oh, let me answer that question. One of the things that I have been harping on is family-school partnerships, right? One of the things that everybody talks about is, back in the day, the community knew each other. Well, okay, we are not back in the day. How does the community get to know each other? It's called the PTA. There's a T in that, PTA. There's a P. And when we're in high school, it's a PTSA, right? I have reached out to a lot of our other elected officials, right? A lot of people don't know this, but school resource officers fall under the sheriff. So having PTAs that include the sheriff, that includes some of the law enforcement officers, right? Because we can now have community-based PTAs. One of the things that PTA learned during the pandemic is there's no wrong way to PTA. And Zoom has opened up all types of possibilities. But PTAs do not, are not intended to function as ATMs for schools. They're not supposed to be the casserole patrol. They are a place for parents and teachers to come together. Because even in the smallest ways, if a child perceives their parent as being a partner with the teacher, they're going to behave better. Do you get what I'm saying? But if there's animosity between the two, right, you're not gonna talk about my mama, right? So you've already created problems. So one of the things that I really want to push, that's why that's part of my family engagement, is if we want to build a community, we have got this system already in place. All we have to do is embrace it, and regardless of, you know, I keep telling him I'm gonna win, but I'm gonna work regardless to make sure that we are building these real community PTAs and that parents have a chance to come together and know one another. I did a video for the National PTA where I talked about, people are like, "When in high school, you don't need a PTA." Oh, yes, you do, because your children are getting into the car with one another, right? So I need a chance to get to know the other parents, so I can know who my child is getting in the car with, who they are not gonna get in the car with, right? So I think that we need to embrace the PTA model, and I think that one of the ways to really address discipline is to make sure that mama, daddy, teacher, grandma, whoever, that they're partners. Thank you.
So with me being a parent, and one of the schools that my, one of my kids that's in, we don't have a PTA. So what do we do? As parents, we still support the school. One thing that I'm, as a board member, looking at, I want to make sure that, as a parent, when I go to the front door, that I can go inside of that school. I want to make sure that I'm getting adequate customer service when I'm a parent. And so what we, to answer your question, we have to involve the parents. But one thing is, the parents must want to be involved in their child's life. We have to make a point in reaching out to the parents, but it's up to that parent if they're gonna go. We're gonna encourage them. As a board member, I'm gonna be in the community. I'm gonna be there to say, "Hey, let's go over to the school. Let's go to District Five. Since that's the school that I'm representing, let's go to Park Cross. Let's create a PTA at Park Cross or some type of parent organization at Park Cross. Let's go over to Johnny Caw and reactivate the parent engagement. They're not active right now. They don't have an active PTA. Let's go there and let's start it as a board member. Let's attend the events that Wilson has had as a board member. Let's attend Blunt. Let's attend House Young. We have to make sure that not only we talk about the, you know, that we're gonna start this, but let's do it. Let's actually go there and be a partner.
I think one of the things that we really need to be concerned about is that every parent didn't have a good experience with education. And so some parents don't care about their children's education. And so I think we have to do some different kind of reaching out. I know in schools with the PTSA, we do some traditional programming, but maybe we need to help parents learn how to budget, or maybe we need to help parents learn how to do homework with their kids. Maybe we can help them attain some type of certification so that they feel a little bit more positive about some of the things that they're doing. And I think the PTSA, the PTA, is a very good vehicle to do that through. So again, that just means making the right decisions as those decisions come across the board table, making sure that they align with some of the agendas that we're talking about here today, and making sure that we make the appropriate decision, having those good discussions, those good rich discussions, but also getting some feedback from parents, reaching out to the community and asking them their opinion about some of the things that we can help them with, so that we can help them help them with their child.
Thank you. I do need to, because PTA, I'm sorry, I do need to clarify something here. Those programs that he's talking about, that actually is what the PTA is supposed to do. And I do need to add, the other thing is, is that there was no PTA at my school when I started the PTA. And the faculty actually voted against the PTA, and I just didn't take no for an answer. We want to thank you all so much for taking the time out to answer questions. We'll sit around a little bit if you have questions, if you all want to ask. I'm sure the candidates will be around for a few minutes until we lock the doors. If you could say your name, the district you're running for, and your priority that you stated earlier. Because we had some people who were, like, and we understand that was a bad exit on the highway. All right, and we'll start with you this time, Marcus.
Marcus Vanderburg, I'm running in District One. I want to put students first. I want to use data to make good decisions. I want to keep building on our positive climate. And lastly, I want to build a bridge to the community so that we can help bring ideas to the superintendent. VoteVanderburg.com is my web address, and if you're on Facebook, it's ElectMarcusVanderburg.com. I'm sorry, ElectMarcusVanderburg.com.
My name is Phaedra Carson Foster, and I am running in District Five. My priorities are family engagement, family engagement, family engagement, accountability, and that means making sure that our ultimate duty of care rests with the well-being of students and the innovation.
Jacory Callaway, District Five. My top three, transparency, building a community to support both teachers and families, as well as improving performances, math and reading focus. My website is jacorycallaway.org, or you can follow me at my social media, @jacorycallaway or MPSBOE.
And I have a website too. It is phaedrafoster.com.
Thank you all so much.